This meeting is a teleconference meeting. Advanced public comments where possible through email, mail, and voicemail. We will also take live comments via the phone, and that number is 629-255-1911. And please do not call until the project you wish to speak about is announced. Also, IT is trying a different method today. Hopefully, our call-ins will be clearer. So if you do not hear me, please raise your hand, or just announce that you are not able to hear. I will take the roll call of commissioners for quorum. And when I say your name, please say present. Okay, we don't see his name yet. Commissioner Fitz?
Present.
Commissioner Johnson? Okay, I'll come back to her. Commissioner Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Mahal?
Present.
Commissioner Price? Commissioner Price?
Present.
Thank you. And Commissioner Williams?
Present.
And I'm coming back to Commissioner Johnson. You still might be on mute. Commissioner Johnson? Okay, we see you on screen but cannot hear you. Okay, well, we do have quorum. And just a little bit as well, too, in the conference area, we do hear you clearly. So IT, thank you for that. Again, we're hearing things in a different way today. Okay. Well, next, the commission must vote on the record that the COVID-19 pandemic requires us to hold a telephonic meeting as permitted under the Governor's Executive Order Number 65. I'll need a motion from one of our commissioners to hold this electronic meeting. So please either raise your hand or announce your name. One of the commissioners?
Hi, Monae, this is Elizabeth Mahal. I recommend that we hold this meeting as a teleconference, telephonic meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. And I see Dr. Lee, Commissioner, also has his hand raised.
Yes, I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, there's a first and there's a second, and I will take the roll.
And Madam Chair, this is Alex Dickerson.
Yes.
Madam Chair, this is Alex Dickerson from Legal. If I could just state for the record, or possibly restate the motion, to that the agenda constitutes essential business of this body, and that meeting electronically is necessary for the health, safety, and welfare and well-being of Tennesseans in light of the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you, Mr. Dickerson. So we have a motion for that in a second, and I will take the roll on that. Vice Chair Stewart? Okay, not yet. Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones? I have a delay in that again. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. And Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Price? You're on mute again, Commissioner?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. Pursuant to the provision of Section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via a statutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. For each case, there will be a public hearing. We ask that the applicant keep their presentation to under 10 minutes. You may reserve two minutes as a rebuttal of public comment. We ask that the public keep their comments to two minutes unless they have previously requested in writing for five minutes as a representative of a group or organization. And we have not received any such requests this time. No voicemails were received. Members of the public calling in will be heard. Ms. Ziegler, are there any proposed changes to the agenda?
Yes, staff request to defer the consolidation project and to move the SP for Edge Hill to the consent agenda. This is the second step in their SP process, so it's just really materials and details. You've already reviewed the overall massing and scale and height and so forth. Staff also request to remove 2517 Fairfax Avenue and 313 Broadway, as the owners have agreed to correct those violations. And I believe Chairman Belle, you would like to remove 107 Church Street from consent so it can be discussed.
Okay. Are there any discussions about this revision by the commission? If it is, please raise your hand. If not, then we need to propose a motion to accept the revised agenda by one of the commissioners. Vice Chair Stewart?
Madam Chairman, I move that we accept the revised consent agenda.
Commissioner Jones?
I second that motion.
Okay, there's a first and there's a second, and I will call the roll. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Before we begin with the first case, Ms. Ziegler, are there any council members who wish to speak?
Yes, I see Councilmember Cash on the call with us. Councilman, did you have anything that you wanted to say this time, or?
No, thank you, not specifically. No, I just wanted to listen in. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Appreciate you being here. And Councilmember Withers has sent two public comments, but I'll just read those when those specific cases come up. And I think that's everyone, unless I'm missing somebody.
Okay. Thank you, Robin. First, our agenda is the approval of the minutes of November 18, 2020. Does anyone, does our commission have any comments or revisions? And I see hands for a motion. Vice Chair Stewart?
Madam Chairman, I move for approval of the minutes.
Commissioner Jones?
I second that motion.
Okay, there's a first and a second. I will take the roll. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner? Okay. Thank you for that, for overlapping a bit. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal? Commissioner Mahal? Might unmute. There you go.
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams? Okay, thank you. I'll make a suggestion, is that when we are ready to take call, if you would just unmute, and then that way you'll be ready to give your vote. So I appreciate that little bit of assistance. Commissioner Fitz? Do you have a question?
Oh, I was just going to let you know that I can hear people saying yes again. I think there's a delay on you hearing them on your end. I saw it happening with Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Price especially. Just wanted to let you know.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioner Mahal?
And I find that if I unmute, if I unmute my microphone about four or five seconds before I expect to say something, that it seems to work better.
Very good. Yes, thank you again. We're trying to work these things out, and again, we have a different system today, but it, we're improving. So thank you for all that feedback. Now is the time for the public to call in if you would like an item removed from the consent agenda, and that number is 629-255-1911. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. Items removed from the consent agenda will be moved to the end of the agenda. First, Ms. Sajid will read the cases proposed for the consent agenda, then I will ask if someone would like an item removed for discussion. Ms. Sajid?
Yes, the first item on the consent agenda is approval of the administrative permits for the month. Next, 202416 West Linden is requesting an addition and outbuilding. The owners of 1710 Linden Avenue request an addition with a setback determination. 206 Carden Avenue is a request for an addition. An addition is planned for 911 Lawrence Avenue. The request for 2803 Blair Boulevard is for an addition. An addition is also planned at 2711 Oakland Avenue. The project for 822 Fatherland Street is an addition. An addition is planned for 2700 Oakland Avenue. The project at 107 Church Street has been removed from the consent agenda. And finally, 1514 through 1518 Edge Hill Avenue is for a final SP, which is the second step in the SP process. You've already approved the overall massing and site plan, and this is for approval of the details such as materials and rhythm of openings. Staff recommends approving these projects along with their applicable conditions as noted in the staff reports.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sajid. Are there any other requests from the public to remove any of the items on the consent agenda? If there is, please raise your hand or announce yourself. We do not see any. So we, Ms. Ziegler, do we have any from over the phone, or?
No, we don't have any callers.
Okay. Seeing none, we will have a motion to accept the consent agenda, and I see that Vice Chair Stewart has his hand raised.
Madam Chairman, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Price?
I second that motion. Second, can you hear me?
We now can. Thank you. We do have a little delay, so that's not a problem. We'll just wait for you. So there's a motion and a second, and I will take the roll on the motion. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Now is the time for the public or anyone else to call concerning the historic landmark for 209-213 Seventh Avenue North, and that call-in number is 629-255-1911. And staff Jenny Warren will give us the presentation.
Yes, good afternoon. The council members requesting historic landmarks for this building was in the National Register of Historic Places in 1982. The Young Women's Christian Association Building is significant because of the contributions made there to the physical, social, intellectual, and spiritual needs of the women of Nashville. The YWCA Building is the last remaining of a group of Christian athletic buildings built in the early 1900s in Nashville. It was the first real home of the YWCA in Nashville. Contributing to the significance are the people associated with the construction of the YWCA Building, and the building is an outstanding local example of the skillful use of the Georgian Revival style in an institutional building. The building meets criteria in five of Section 17.36.120 of the ordinance as it is listed in the National Register of Historic Places. There have been no changes since listing in 1982 that would jeopardize its historic status. Staff recommends adoption of the design guidelines, finding that they are consistent with the Secretary of the Interior standards.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Warren. And again, for the public to call in if there's any comments, we'll give you some time, 629-255-1911. And?
Mr. Robert is on the phone, and he may wish to speak.
Okay. Mr. Robert?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, really not much comment beyond what was said, but yeah, we came into control of that building last year, and I think it's a fantastic example, and obviously one of the few examples left in the style in the city of Nashville that is undergoing so much development. We have placed a historic preservation easement on that property that has been granted to Historic Nashville, so the building is already protected in that context, but we'd be happy to support the city on this.
Okay. Thank you very much for this project, and it is quite worthy as well. Is the Councilman O'Connell in? Do we see him on?
I don't believe he's with us right now.
Okay.
And Councilmember Berkeley was actually the council member who's technically the applicant, but she is not with us either.
Okay. All right. So have we received any other public comment, telephone lines?
We have not received any written comment, and there are no callers.
Okay. Again, thank you to the applicant for working with staff and also for presenting this project. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Oh, any questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I was just going to say that the report and the history of this building was really well done and really interesting to read, so thank you to those who put it together. And then, in that light, I would move for approval of the 209 to 213 Seventh Avenue North as a historic landmark.
Okay, before we make that motion, I will need to close public hearing. And then, now noted that you have made that motion, Commissioner Jones, and Vice Chair, oh, had his hand raised. Commissioner Mahal?
I second that motion.
Commissioner Mahal?
I second that motion.
Okay, there's a first and there's a second. Vice Chair, do you have a comment?
I do have a comment. I just want to recognize and tell the new owners of this building, I know it's recently changed hands, and appreciate Mr. Robert and the new ownership, having the commitment and the direction to protect this building. It's a magnificent building that I've been familiar with for decades, really an important part of Nashville, and really applaud their efforts to preserve that and to make sure it stays maintained.
Thank you, Vice Chair Stewart. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I will take the roll call for that. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones? Yes. Would you mind saying that a little louder?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. All right, and the next project, I believe, Ms. Ziegler?
Design Guidelines.
Okay.
Landmark.
All right, I have that next on the agenda, is correct. The next item is the Historic Landmark Guidelines, and again, the public can call in to 629-255-1911. And staff, Ms. Baldog will be our presenter.
Staff is recommending a revision of the Historic Landmark Design Guidelines. Currently, there are 61 historic landmarks. 69% of those properties are owned by Metro. The draft guidelines have been online for approximately 10 months. There are four main areas of changes. The Secretary of Interior Standards have been updated since the establishment of the current design guidelines. Therefore, the revised language has been added. Guidance on partial demolition and demolition of non-contributing structures of a landmark site have also been added. Guidance for alterations have been added. And finally, guidance on signage has been added. Historic landmarks vary greatly from landscapes to buildings, from rural properties to urban properties, from commercial buildings to residential buildings, and from a collection of structures to a single structure. For that reason, the draft guidelines remain simple enough that they can be applied to any historic property. Staff conducted an informal review of permits that have already been issued over the years, and finds that all of the previously approved projects would still be allowed under these draft design guidelines. Staff finds the current draft will not change regulations, but instead will provide more guidance, and is consistent with the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966 as amended. Staff recommends approval of the draft design guidelines to apply to all existing and future landmarks, and finds that the guidelines are consistent with the Historic Preservation Act of 1966.
Thank you, Ms. Baldog. Technically, there is no applicant for this project, so Ms. Ziegler, have we received any other public comment?
No, there is no public comment, but if, while we're waiting, while we're giving a little bit of time for callers, where normally we would have an applicant to speak, if the commissioners have any questions for me, I'm happy to take those.
Okay, so we're going to close public hearing. And commissioners, do you have any comments or other questions concerning these guidelines that will become record? Commissioner Vice Chair Stewart?
Madam Chairman, I'm excited to see these guidelines updated and strengthened, and really encourage the public and others out there to continue to seek landmark approval of buildings that are worthy of recognition. And with that, I would like to move for approval.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Is there a second? Commissioner Price?
I second that motion. Is it again?
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. There's a first and there's a second, and I will take the roll if there's no other questions. Again, thank you to the staff for working through all of this, and with the public comments as well. Okay. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. We will move on to is 313 Broadway still?
It is off the agenda, so next will be 1501 Linden with Mr. Alexander.
1501 Linden Avenue, correct? Okay, the number for the public to call in, give us some time there, is 629-255-1911. And staff, Mr. Alexander, will present the project.
Okay, this is a proposal to enlarge the historic house with an addition that will go wider to the right side. The connection is primarily to the right side and altering the roof of a rear addition that was first approved in 2009 that has been constructed. The 2009 addition appears as two stories tall because a drop in grade allows for a basement level, but the roof is differentiated with a low slope hyphen attaching to the rear of the historic house. The depth of the addition from front to back, and the footprints do not change, as you'd see from this side, but the proposal does alter the roof and window proportions there on the left side. Portions of the wall are being removed to create recessed porches on the main level and basement level. Staff finds this appropriate because they are not historic portions of the house. However, a wraparound deck or balcony is shown as being added on the left side. Staff finds that this deck is, location is not appropriate wider than the house because the addition is also going wider to the right. The proposal also includes increasing the wall heights, raising the eaves to match the original eave height, and adding a half-story roof and tying into the rear the original roof. The primary roof on the addition is a hip with gabled dormers, which is compatible with the original roof. The connector between the primary original roof and hip on the addition has a shed roof dormer. The historic house's roof consists of a hip with hip and gable projections. Staff finds that a shed dormer, or that another form of dormer like a hip or gable would be more appropriate. And also on this side, the connector roof is shown tying in flush with the side plane of the original roof without stepping down. Additions on houses previously have been required to step in from the side slopes in order to differentiate new construction from a historic and leave the house intact. Those are conditions we have in the ultimate recommendation of approval, and the applicant has agreed to those changes, so we can go to the next, and then the next slide, and even to the one after that. Go ahead to the next elevation area. The addition, as I said, goes wider to the right, it goes 15 feet 9 inches wider. Staff finds the additional width here is appropriate because the lot is 100 feet wide, and because the wider component is set back well behind the mass of the historic house. But the hip roof has a gabled dormer on the right side, and there's a hip dormer on the front slope of the rear additions roof. Staff recommends that this dormer should be eliminated, as it makes the scale of the addition read as a one-and-a-half-story addition, whereas the house reads as only a single-floor house. In the past, additions have been approved to be wider than a historic house, but they've been kept to the number of stories matching the existing in order to keep the scale subordinate. So eliminating that, or another option would be to reduce the width of the dormer, so it doesn't extend out beyond essentially the silhouette. so it doesn't extend out beyond essentially the silhouette of the chimney. Other than that, the window proportion materials and setbacks of the addition are appropriate. Staff. Staff recommends approval with the conditions listed on the staff recommendation and shown on this slide. I believe the applicant agrees to all of the conditions except number six, which they'd like to discuss. That's the end of my presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Alexander. And the applicant is welcome to announce himself.
Hey, my name is Martin Wick. I am at nine twelve Bailey Street on the architect for this project. As Sean said, we're happy to comply with the, I think it's the other six conditions. And then we just wanted to discuss briefly the condition number six to the removal of that front-facing dormer. I think there are a couple of circumstances that I just kind of wanted to bring up and mention about sort of why I think this is one of the better solutions for what we're trying to accomplish here on this project. First, I just wanted to note that it is, the front face of that dormer is about sixty-eight feet back from the front wall of the historic house and about ninety-three feet back from the street. So it's a good distance away. And, you know, obviously, in elevation, it's easy to tell that it extends beyond the house, but from a perspective on the street, from that kind of distance, I think the scale of it won't be as noticeable. The other sort of part of this is, one of the things that we're really trying to do is to work with the, essentially just within the existing addition that had been added to this house and to leave the historic house pretty much intact as it is right now. It's in really great condition. It's been taken very good care of. And so we would really like to avoid doing much else to it. But we do need to hit a certain number of bedrooms and square footage for this addition. And that dormer on the front face there is allowing us to get an additional bedroom in this addition. If we have to remove the dormer, the other sort of options that are still available to us would be to add a dormer to the existing roof form or to the historic roof form, you know, behind sort of the halfway point, which even in doing that would start to partially cover up that rear dormer. Or we also have the option to add a side addition to the historic house here as well. Again, covering up a good portion of that dormer from the street view if we did that, but also then sort of taking over a section of the historic house and having to remove more of it, you know, than we would really like to. So I think this dormer is really one of the better solutions for how we can get that additional bedroom that we need to sort of hit the program that we need. And I would hope that, given those sort of circumstances that I brought up, it could hopefully be the best solution that we could find here moving forward. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have about the project.
Thank you, Mr. Wick. Commissioners, do you have any questions for him right now? If none. I see that Councilmember Cash has his hand raised. Councilmember.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I just have a question, not a comment. Well, I'm just curious about, I've seen lately that there are more, or I've noticed more additions that are wider than the frontage. And I'm just curious, just trying to wrap my head around that a little better. And maybe it's that I'm paying more attention now. But if Mr. Alexander could speak to the rationale behind allowing that on this a little bit better, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Yeah, yes, absolutely, Councilman. Melissa, could you flip up to the site plan? So Councilmember Cash, you're absolutely right. Typically, we do like to see additions with not any wider than the historic house and preferably not any taller as well. Obviously, on a corner lot, you're going to see something even if it's, you know, no matter where you put it, you're going to see it. But we do like them to sort of be inside the silhouette of the house as you would see it from the front. And that's normally the case, but this being a hundred-foot-wide lot, the guidelines allow for additions to be wider. I believe the language of the guideline says on lots that are wider than sixty feet or wider than the typical lot size for the block. And this being a double lot, it's a double lot, but the house is right-centered. So even though you have twice the average lot size, you couldn't divide it just because if the house were shifted to one side or the other, you could probably divide it and have another house there. But in order to sort of utilize more of the lot than if we were just to keep the house behind, the addition just between that, behind the house, we do allow either a T-shaped wider addition or even a side addition to the historic house itself. So this is certainly preferable to that in that they are not really altering the front or sides of the historic house. It's just an addition that goes back and then goes wider.
I appreciate that explanation. So it doesn't have anything to do with the front width of the house, just the lot size?
That sometimes can be a consideration. It's not so much on this one, but let's say there was a standard fifty-foot-wide lot, but you had a very narrow house. You know, maybe the average house is maybe thirty feet wide, but if you had one house, it was only twenty feet wide or something like that. It's sort of a similar effect in that there's so much lot that would be, not be able to be utilized if we didn't allow for a wider addition. So that's, I think, the reasoning for allowing either a wide addition on a wide lot or a wide addition on a narrow house that's maybe shifted. But for us, you know, for a typical normal house on a normal lot, we would not want to see a wider addition.
Gotcha, thank you. I appreciate you taking the time to explain that.
Well, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Cash. Ms. Seigler, do we have any call-ins from public comment?
No callers.
No emails and no voicemails. Okay. Mr. Wick, do you have any comment to the public comment?
No, I don't think so. I think Sean covered all of the, sort of the points about the side addition.
Okay. We may have some more questions for you. So I will close public hearing and the Commission will have discussion. Sean, will you please put the recommendations on the screen just so we can have that?
Yes, sure.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you. I believe it's number six again, reiterating that that's the one piece there that the applicant is asking for us to discuss. Commissioner Jones.
Yes, thank you, Chair Bell. I'll just, after reading this report and looking at all this, I am in agreement with staff that I believe all those conditions are necessary. I currently like the small current addition that's on it. And I think the addition of the new addition just completely overwhelms the house. That east elevation, I just think is with the dormer, I'm just in agreement with staff. And yes, just to reiterate, you know, as a Commission, you know, it's, we don't have to solve the problem of fixing the programming. Sometimes you just might not be able to have as many bedrooms, you know, as the homeowner wants. So I'd just say in this case, I'm in agreement with all the recommendations. And in fact, I'm still thinking it just seems a little large to me.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mayhaw.
Yeah, I tend to agree with Commissioner Jones. And so, but I see that, I was going to make a motion, but I see that Commissioner Johnson has her hand up, so I would like to hear from her.
Okay. We will hold your motion, Commissioner, and Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I do appreciate Commissioner Jones' comment because applicant, you know, tried to reason with us that, you know, the Commissioner Jones' motion reminded our role as a commissioner. And so I think in this particular section with the design, although I do appreciate the applicant tried to, you know, incorporate other conditions, but I hundred percent agree with the staff in this addition. I think removing the right-side dormer will be more proportionally appropriate. It's already wider and large house. And so I just want to reiterate a thanks for the staff. And I really enjoyed, I'm not an architect, so sometimes it's so hard for me to follow roof line and ambition and so forth, but, you know, staff, Sean, you know, did a really great job convincing me why those conditions are needed in this particular house. So thanks to that, and I do agree with that a hundred percent with the staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Johnson, I do concur. And it was a lot going on in this particular project. And to follow those roof lines, this is Chair Bell. So yes, well said. And Commissioner Mayhaw, do you want to come back on your motion?
Sure. I would like to move that we adopt the staff approval of the conditions for fifteen oh one Linden Avenue.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioner Williams.
I'd like to second that motion.
Yes, sir, thank you. There's a first and a second. And any other discussion, questions? If not, we will take the roll. Vice Chair Stewart.
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Mayhaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Price.
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. And we will move to the next project, which is seventeen twelve Blair Boulevard. And the number for the public to call in is six two nine two five five one nine one one. And staff, Ms. Sajid, will be our presenter.
Yes, so the house located at seventeen twelve Blair Boulevard is a circa nineteen fifteen four square that contributes to the historic character of the Belmont Hillsboro neighborhood. This application is to construct a rear addition and also includes demolition of an existing two-story enclosed porch on the rear, alteration of existing window and door openings on the historic house, and relocation of an existing exterior stair. As proposed, the addition is located at the rear, you could go to the previous one with the site plan, please. It's located at the rear of the house and meets all setbacks. Parking for the units is provided via surface parking, which is accessed from the alley, as well as two proposed dedicated parallel parking spaces along Blair Boulevard. If Public Works does not, for some reason, does not approve the proposed on-street parking and additional onsite parking is needed, staff would recommend that there be no parking paths located within the front yard of the site. Next slide, please. The request is for a two-story rear addition to a two-and-a-half-story historic house. Due to the change in grade, the addition picks up a full basement level. As proposed, the addition is no taller than the historic house and does not more than double the existing footprint. The primary massing of the addition is no wider than that of the historic house, but it does include two projecting bays on the main level that extend two feet wider than the primary sidewalls of the house. Staff finds that the proposed projections can be appropriate in this case, since there were historically two such projections on the historic house with one on each side facade. And the proposed projections don't extend any wider than the remaining bay window on the upper level of the right side. So the project also includes the demolition of a two-story enclosed porch on the rear. This element does show up on the nineteen fourteen Sandborne map. While the porch may be original to the house, staff finds that its demolition can meet the design guidelines, given the porch's location at the rear, along with its separate roof form and change in materials, staff finds that this element is not a character-defining feature and it would meet the design guidelines for demolition. The project also includes alterations of existing window and door openings on both side facades as well as relocation of an exterior staircase. On the right side facade, there is an existing exterior staircase that is to be removed and the door and the bay windows to be converted back to a window similar to the other bay windows, the other windows in that bay. The nineteen fourteen Sandborne map indicates that the dwelling was a single-family home at that time. So it's very likely that subsequently the house was converted to include additional dwelling units, which isn't uncommon for houses in this area. Anyway, staff finds that the alterations on the right side facade to be appropriate since it will likely restore an historic condition. A new exterior stair is to be added to the left side and a window converted to a door to access a dwelling unit. The proposed alterations are at a location of a bay window that was present as early as nineteen fourteen. It showed up on that Sandborne map, but clearly has been altered so that only the roof of the bay window remains. Converting a window to a door or even adding a door beyond the midpoint on a side facade of a historic house might be appropriate if the door is located at the ground level. However, the location of the proposed door would necessitate the addition of new exterior stairs. The existing exterior stairs on the right side predate the overlay. So they could remain or be removed as proposed. Staff finds, however, that introducing a new exterior staircase on a side elevation where it did not exist historically is inappropriate, given the visibility of that addition. Some alternatives would be, that would meet the design guidelines, would be to introduce a door opening at the basement level or to add an exterior stair to the rear elevation. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval with the conditions that are outlined in the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Sajid. I believe the applicant is online, so you are welcome to announce yourself.
Yes, this is Will Jenner, Jenner Design. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm at twenty-six ten Westwood Drive. Thank you, Melissa and the committee, for having us on here. We agree with all the comments and recommendations except for the stair and would like to discuss that a little bit with the Commission. You know, currently, the existing stair on the right side was done, you know, pre-guidelines and, you know, is a steel stair. It's pretty ugly. It's highly visible from Blair and the house to the right. The house to the right has a driveway that literally, when you pull in on that side, you see that stair every time. And if you drive down Blair, it's very highly visible. And what we're asking for is, you know, what we want to do is take that stair down, cover up that doorway there. But we still need to have another entrance into the duplex that was originally, not originally, sorry, was done in the past. And feel like pushing it back to where the other one, the other bay window was on the left side made the most sense from a visual perspective as it's made the most sense from a visual perspective, as it's pushing it back. It would have a stone base to match the foundation of the existing building. And the stairs would exit towards the back. So from Blair Street, you wouldn't really see it hardly at all. And it would replace, you know, the window that is in that bay window now that is not, you know, that was obviously replaced, you know, at a later date and doesn't meet the character of the overall house, the arched window. So we feel like that's, you know, a better overall solution visually aesthetically-wise than just keeping the steel stair, like Melissa said, we could do. That we remove that, make the house a lot more beautiful from the front and visually down Blair Street. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jenner. Do you mind adding some questions for you? I do see Counselor Cash has his hand raised, if you had a comment.
Thank you. I'm sorry for having so many questions today. Mr. Jeeves said something-
Not a problem, sir.
I was looking at the, the staff report that's online. And Ms. Jeeves said something about parking and public works that I don't see included on there. And I was, I want to understand that a little better, if I could. Where, where, it seemed, she said something about, something permitted by public works, possibly.
Yes, so, so we've moved back to the site plan slide. The site plan is on the bottom. If you look at the right side of that plan, oh, yes, this is Melissa Sajid. Yes.
Thank you.
So on this site plan, you see on the right Blair Boulevard. And it's showing two, kind of like a cutout and two parking spaces in the right-of-way, where I guess cars would park parallel. We weren't aware if Public Works had approved those spaces. Maybe the applicant can, has contacted them and could speak to that more. Our main concern is that if Public Works will not permit this, we would not want to see parking pads within the front yard in front of the house, you know, to compensate for that.
Okay, and so those two spaces that I'm looking at are on the applicant's property or on Blair Boulevard itself?
No, sir, they are on Blair Boulevard.
Okay, I'm not aware of any, I don't recall parking being right there on Blair Boulevard, but I could be wrong, and I'll look again.
Oh, it's not currently existing. It's something that's proposed with this application.
And it would have to go to, like, the Traffic and Parking Commission?
You know, I'm not, right, I'm not sure. It's not something that our staff could approve, since it is, since it's located in the right-of-way. But it would need to be, I would imagine, permitted by Public Works Department. The process for that, I'm not sure.
Is that something Mr. Jenner could speak to?
Yeah, I believe, you know, once we get, yep, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we just, we just want to make sure that that's you because of-
Yes, it's me.
Thank you, Mr. Jenner.
Yes, I mean, it's my understanding in the process that once we get this preservation permit, we still submit down to codes, which will have to go through zoning and public works, you know, site plan review and all that stuff for the parking. So I believe, yes, it will have to be reviewed by Public Works and the rest down there to get our building permit for the site.
And you expect those two spaces to be public parking or exclusive to the residents of the house at 1712?
I believe they're exclusive to the resident. Hi, this is David Morgan. I'm the developer and owner of the property. I'm here with Will Jenner. I can put a portion of the, specifically, as we're rebuilding this property, the base zoning of this property is multifamily development, armed zoning specifically. And as we're developing the historic house with the additions that we're adding, in order to meet some of those public work requirements, we have to have a certain amount of parking spaces allocated based on the unit density that we have on the property. So two of those spaces on the sidewalk or public right-of-way are a portion of that. We get a specific credit. I have a separate engineering firm that is working. Depending upon this approval, the next step of working with Public Works and the different engineering departments for those requirements that we'd also have to meet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Ms. Ziegler, do we have any other public comment?
No public comments and no callers.
Okay, we will close public comment. And we will have discussion with commission. By the way, those are good questions, and we may be able to discuss those if there are any items that the commission would like to clarify. Commissioner Price?
Yes, thank you, Chair Bell. This question is for Melissa Sajid. Melissa, just eyeballing these plans and then also doing a little bit of math, that this addition is larger than the historic house, quite a bit larger. Over 300 square feet larger. I'm not sure if maybe, maybe I may correct somehow, but I was wondering if you could address that.
This is Melissa Sajid. So yes, when I did the calculation based on the measurements on the floor plan, and I don't have those numbers in front of me, but when I computed that and took into account the addition that's to be removed, it did not, it did not more than double the footprint. So, so yeah, so that's-
If you get the graphic that's up on the screen now, if you multiply the two sections, the new addition is 345 square feet larger than, but to me, I don't know, that's too big and overwhelms the people's house.
Right, and I apologize, I didn't include the floor plans in the presentation. But the, I think the footprint, as shown on the site plan, is not completely representative of the actual footprint that's being proposed, because it does not include the two-by-four insets. And then we also included the, in the footprint, the bay windows that are proposed. I mean, when you look at this, it looks like it's actually wider than the historic house, which in fact, it's not. So that's something we can definitely ask for before permitting is an updated site plan that actually reflects the footprint. Does that make sense? Will that help?
It may help. I mean, just to my eye, it looks too big. So I don't know if any other commissioners want to have a comment, but that's where I am.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other commissioners? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Jones. And I also echo, yeah, I echo Commissioner Price just then. You know, looking in the staff report of my, of my left elevation, again, you know, it's just a static image of one side, but it just seems much larger than the historic house. So I'm not sure, you know, what other commissioners think or what could be done, you know, or what others might think. But yeah, that, I'm also kind of on that same page with Commissioner Price on that. It doesn't seem, it just seems to be much larger than the historic house, looking at the images in the staff report.
Let's hold on that. Commissioner Jones, Vice Chair?
I think, based on the comments of the two commissioners, it might be appropriate to add a condition to this, if we approve it, that the square footage be finally calculated by the staff and determined, and as a condition that it not more than double the size of the existing house.
Staff, is that duly noted? Commissioner Price?
Yeah, as a follow-up question, when we're calculating the size of the original house, so that we make sure we don't go over, as the guidelines say we should not, the commission, the staff does not count nonhistoric square footage, right? Or does it?
This is Melissa Sajid again. That has been the practice. So in this case, where they're removing, which actually might have been a two-story covered porch on the rear, we would take that into account and look at the net gain compared to the house. But if that, if that two-story covered porch were not historic, we would also, it has been the practice to take that into account as well. But, you know, we're open to guidance, clearly, we're open to guidance from the commission and appreciate the discussion.
Okay, well, yeah, I would be willing to approve this staff recommendation with an added condition, the addition be no larger than firmly established original square footage of the historic.
Okay, Commissioner, that's a motion. Vice Chair, do you have a motion, a second on that? And we'll have a question by Commissioner Fitz.
I will second that.
Okay, yes, sir, thank you. Commissioner Fitz?
I was just going to clarify on the square footage, that it's the footprint, not overall square footage.
This is Melissa Sajid again. That's correct, it is just the footprint that we look at.
But just include that in the condition of the, of the motion. Thanks.
This is Commissioner Price, I agree. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, Ms. Ziegler, is that clear on, or do we need to reiterate that again?
Oh, this is Robin Ziegler. I did have one question. I just want to make sure I heard it correctly. So the addition should not be larger than the square footage of the original historic portion of the house, not taking into account any non-contributing additions. Is that right?
Commissioner Price?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, that is the motion. And Vice Chair Stewart seconded that motion. And I will now take call. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson? Vice Commissioner? Yes. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayhaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner, for that discussion. It's very valuable to get some clarification on those things. And our next project will be 1101 McKinney. And the number again for the public to call in is 629-255-1911. And staff, Ms. Warren will be our presenter.
Yes, the existing structure at 1101 McKinney Avenue is a non-contributing car wash that sits at the corner of McKinney Avenue and Gallatin Road. The project will, sorry?
Jenny, it's just that we're getting all these feedbacks, so there was a call-in, so please continue.
Okay, sorry. Would you like me to start over?
Sure.
Okay, the existing structure at 1101 McKinney is a non-contributing car wash that sits at the corner of McKinney Avenue and Gallatin Road. The project will convert the car wash into a commercial kitchens. A setback determination is required for small additions on the rear elevation. Staff recommends approval with the typical conditions regarding material approvals and the siding of the HVAC. The only other condition involves access to Gallatin Road. Staff initially recommended that a stair be cut into the existing retaining wall to provide a pedestrian connection to the sidewalk along Gallatin Road. After finalizing this recommendation, staff learned from the applicant that this idea had been explored early on in project development. It was determined that providing a stair to the sidewalk would not be compliant with ADA and would trigger a very long switchback ramp that the change in grade in the site cannot support. Given this information, staff recommends the deletion of condition number one. There was another slide, there we go. You can see that retaining wall there in front. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the application with conditions two and three, as seen in your report and on the following slide.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Warren. And again, this is the time for the public to call in. And that number is 629-255-1911. And if the, I see that the applicant is on the line, please announce yourself.
Hi, this is David Bronner. I'm actually passing it over to Jamie Pfeffer, who I think Jenny and Sarah had added to the invite. Can you pass that over?
Yes, thank you, sir. Mr. Pfeffer? Please announce yourself.
Yes, this is Jamie Pfeffer with Pfeffer Tread Architecture, 921B Woodland Street. We appreciate staff's thoughtful review of this project. With the removal of condition one regarding the stairs, we have, we're of full support of all the other standard staff recommendations and glad to take any other questions or comments. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, applicant, and Mr. Bronner, and Mr. Pfeffer as well. And Ms. Ziegler, do we have any public comment?
There are, there's no comment and no callers.
Okay, and do we have a comment from?
Oh, excuse me, yes, you're right. I'm sorry, I appreciate you keeping track of me.
Sure, yes.
We had a comment from Councilmember Withers. Councilman, Councilmember Withers writes, "I'm writing to express my support for the application at 1101 McKinney Avenue in the Eastwood and CCO district. This is a car wash building that is difficult to convert into a traditional commercial building, but this plan does so in an imaginative way. Just a block away, the former Max Market Gas Station at 1305 Gallatin, Gallatin and Douglas in the Eastwood District, was established a few years ago and rebuilt on the foundations of the former market building in a manner that does not look historic, but that incorporates both traditional and contemporary design elements and lots of windows. This project similarly takes a building that was clearly designed for cars and retrofits it with storefront-designed, storefront-sized windows, contemporary commercial finishes, outdoor seating arrangements and landscape screening that does not mimic the design aesthetic of historic neighborhood retail buildings, but does recreate the scale, massing, and functionality of a traditional neighborhood market or sidewalk cafe space. For this non-contributing building at the edge of the Eastwood District, flexibility of materials selections are appropriate. In the last five years or so, Gallatin Avenue, along the shared corridor between the Eastwood and Greenwood districts, has blossomed with new restaurants, retail, and neighborhood medical office uses that have, that have given our neighbors a reason to walk down Gallatin. This project will create a unique elevated patio concept that continues the street activation momentum, while also providing much-needed landscaping to soften that sometimes uninviting Gallatin Avenue pedestrian streetscape. I encourage the commissioners to approve this application, which will enhance our Eastwood neighborhood. I thank the applicant and the staff for working together on these plans and recommendations."
Thank you, Ms. Ziegler, and also thank you to Counselor Withers for his comments to the commission. Since we will close public hearing, other than no other calls or hands raised from the public, give it just a moment. Sure that nobody has their hand raised? All right. I see Vice Stewart, Stewart has his hand raised?
Madam Chairman, this project is an exciting project that really will enhance the public experience while being green and keeping the existing building. Now, although the building's not historic, it is great to see an adaptive use of this nature. I support the staff recommendations and the project and move for approval with the deletion of recommendation one of the pedestrian connection to the sidewalk.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Fitz?
Yes, I not only second the motion, but second everything that Vice Chair Stewart just said. This is a great example of adaptive reuse and is a great contribution to the neighborhood. So I second that motion.
Okay, and before we take the roll, Commissioner Price?
Yeah, I love everything. This is a great project. I'm really excited as a nearby neighbor of the property, and I've even washed my car there before when it was still open. So anyway, thank you, great project, good job, applicant, and I second everything that's been said. Thank you.
Okay, any other commissioners have any other comments before we take the roll? Okay, yes, also concur with the other commissioners as well. All right, Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. We will go to the next project, which is 3903A Kipalong, believe that is the pronunciation. And again, the public to call in is 629-255-1911, and staff, Ms. Baldock will be our presenter.
3903A Kipalong is a non-contributing structure constructed about 1986. MHCC staff issued a demolition permit for the house in November 2020. The applicant proposes to construct infill. The proposed infill meets all base zoning setbacks, it is shifted to the side a lot to retain the existing driveway. The front setback lines up with the front setbacks of the houses on either side of it. The proposed infill will be one and a half stories, which staff finds to meet historic context. The infill will be 28 feet 10 inches tall at the front, which is in keeping with the neighborhood historic context. It will have a total width of 54 feet 11 inches, but the width of the one and a half story portion is just 44 feet 11 inches wide. The wider portions are just one story in height. Staff finds that this is similar to several houses on the block where there is a main form of the house with wider one-story wings. Here are the side facades. Staff finds that the proposed materials, finished ratio pattern, reforms, orientation and overall design to meet the design guidelines. Here is the rear facade. Here are the context photos. And here is the recommendation, staff is recommending approval, the infill was under greater conditions seen here on the screen, and also listed in the staff recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Baldock, and believe the applicant is on the line, please announce yourself. Okay, Ms. Mount, are you on the line? We'll give this just a moment. All right. We do not see your number on the screen, however, we just want to be sure we have applicant to be able to have comment. Ms. Ardane, do you think she's on the line?
I don't.
All right. Maybe she'll come back in, and do we have any public comments, Ms. Ziegler?
No public comments and no callers.
Okay. I want to sort of hold public comments open, but we'll see how this goes then, if she happens to call in again. All right, yes, Vice Chair Stewart?
Madam Chairman, regrettably, we weren't able to hear from the applicant, however, the recommendation only includes the standard conditions that I don't think would be controversial. And, and based on the staff recommendations and the application, I move for approval with staff recommendation.
Yes, sir, okay. Yes, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I was just going to second that motion.
There's a first and a second, any other discussion before the roll? Okay, seeing no hands raised, I will take the roll. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. We will move forward to 4709 Elkins, and for the public to call in at 629-255-1911, and staff, Ms. Sajit will be our presenter.
The commission approved demolition of the historic house located at 4709 Elkins Avenue in October 2019, finding that the house met the criteria for economic hardship. This application is to construct infill that, as proposed, meets the design guidelines for height and scale, roof form setbacks, orientation and materials. The 4,700 block of Elkins Avenue includes a mix of one, one and a half story and two-story historic homes that include a broad range of building heights and widths. In this context, the one and one, the one and one and one-half story homes tend to be on the shorter end of the heights, but the wider end of the building widths, whereas the two-story historic homes are taller yet narrower than the other forms. As proposed, the infill is one and one and one-half stories, that is, that is appropriately scaled for the historic context. The infill is one and a half stories with amassing similar to the historic home that's been approved for demolition. Most of the windows are twice as tall as they are wide, however, there are two windows on the right side facade near the front that are smaller and not quite twice as tall as they are wide. In addition, there is an approximately 15-foot expanse that does not include a window or door opening. The design guidelines recommend that an opening be included every eight to 13 feet. Given the location of these windows on the side facade near the front of the infill, staff recommends that the proportions be revised so that they are twice as tall as they are wide, and that an additional window be added. In conclusion, staff recommends approval with the conditions that are seen here on your screen and outlined in the staff recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sajit. Is the applicant on the line? And if so, please announce yourself. Perhaps not?
I don't see them, and we don't have any callers.
Okay, well, then we will close public comment, public hearing, and commissioners, either discussion or a motion. Vice Chair Stewart? Vice Chair, I think you have yourself muted.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Madam Chairman, with respect to, to 4709 Elkins Avenue, I move for approval with the conditions of the staff recommendations.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Price?
I second Vice Chair Stewart.
Okay, there's a first, there's a second, any other discussions before we take the roll? If not, here we go. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
You're muted again, Vice Chair. Vice Chair, please say that one more time.
Can you hear it? Yes.
There we go, thank you. Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. We will move forward to the next project, 1124A and B Sharp Avenue, and the call-in number again is 629-255-1911, and staff, Ms. Sajit, will be our presenter.
This is an application to demolish an existing non-contributing house and to construct a duplex infill at 1124 Sharp Avenue. The commission disapproved a plan for infill in September. Since then, the owner has continued to work with staff on a proposal that, that's appropriate for the historic context. So the house located at 1124 Sharp was constructed in 1996 and does not contribute to the historic character of the Eastwood neighborhood. Staff finds demolition of the house to meet the design guidelines. Most of this block on, on Sharp Avenue was included in the 2014 expansion of the Eastwood overlay. So the 1,100 block of Sharp Avenue has a strong historic context of one-story and modest one and a half story historic homes. The photo on top shows contributing houses to the left of the site, and the photo on the bottom shows houses to the right. The context includes, to the right includes a mix of contributing and non-contributing houses, including taller duplexes constructed prior to the overlay. Most of the houses across the street are contributing. So the proposed infill meets all design guidelines. It's one and a half stories with amassing that is appropriate for this block of Sharp Avenue. And in conclusion, staff recommends approval with conditions that are set forth in the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Sajit, and believe the applicant is on the line. If you would like to speak, you're welcome to announce yourself.
Walid Sider, and I thank the staff working with us, and we're gonna continue working with the staff, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Applicant Sider. Ms. Ziegler, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have public comment from Councilmember Withers. He writes, "I wanted to write to express my support for the revised infill proposal for 1124 Sharp Avenue in the Eastwood District. The prior infill proposal was too large for the surrounding historic cottage context. This new proposal is much better in terms of height and massing. In fact, the proposed height is less than what we see on some single-family infill projects. It appears that in this site plan, the existing curb cut and driveway will be removed, and that the vehicular access will be limited to the alley, which is important since Sharp Avenue is unusually narrow. While many neighbors do park on the street, it is technically not allowed because of the double-yellow striping. Therefore, the alley access parking is a preferred solution. This revised plan will bring more consistency to the historic rhythm and pattern of the street than the current house presents, while also removing vehicle parking from the front setback. I appreciate the applicants and staff working together to bring back a greatly improved application for this 1124 Sharp Avenue parcel in Eastwood. I encourage the commissioners to approve the plans with staff recommendations."
And we thank Councilor Withers for his comments. We do not have other public comment, we will close public hearing, and commissioners discuss or have questions or a motion. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to thank applicant working with the staff and to make the house with in-line appropriate condition suits with a neighborhood historical overlay. And I understand sometimes, especially looking at the house two doors down, like a proportionally larger house already existed, but those are the reason for starting the neighborhood historical overlay, and really appreciate the understanding and working and make the great plan. So for that, if no other comment from the other commissioner, I would like to move to approve 1124 and B Sharp Avenue with conditions staff recommended.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, there is a first and there's a second, any other discussions or questions before the roll? Seeing none? Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes. Yes.
And Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. As Chair, I'd like to just make one comment before we move on to the 107 Church Street. For my reasoning on, on moving that out of consent, we do have a couple of new commissioners, and also, our zoning commission is quite sensitive to painted signage on historic structures, so I thought it was a good opportunity to have discussion, and also to be able to refresh our recall about having this type of project in an historic overlay. So there you have it, and Ms. Sajit will be our presenter, and again, that number to call in is 629-255-1911, and this is on 107 Church Street.
So the building located at 107 Church Street is a three-story commercial building that was constructed circa 1890 and contributes to the historic character of the Second Avenue Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. Next slide. The request is to install a painted sign on the Church Street facade of the building. The proposed painted sign meets all guidelines except for allotment. The guidelines permits painted signage to be a maximum of 125 square feet. The commission has interpreted this as a maximum allotment of painted signage for the building. In this case, there's an existing painted sign on the Church Avenue facade that is 225 square feet. This application proposes to add a second painted sign that is 115 square feet. Signage allotment is determined based on the building and not the number of businesses. In this case, the building includes two businesses, the Hooters, which is at 184 Second Avenue North, and Beer Cellar, which is at 107 Church Street. So the existing signage at Hooters predates the overlay and was likely installed in 1994 when the projecting sign on Second Avenue was first approved. Although technically not yet considered historic, the existing painted sign is the only painted sign in the Second Avenue overlay that is not historic. In the nearby Broadway Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay, additional allotment has been allowed when a historic sign has been kept, even if the signage exceeded the limits. Since the proposed signage is minimal, the existing sign is an established sign in the district being approximately 25 years old and predating the overlay, and there are no other nonhistoric existing painted signs in the district to set a precedent, staff finds that the proposed painted sign could be appropriate with the understanding that the building has met its allotment for painted signage. Next slide, please. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the painted sign with the condition that it is not to include metallic fluorescent and dayglow paints, and with the understanding that the building has met the maximum of its painted signage allotment. With these conditions, staff finds that the project meets Section 4 signage of the design guidelines for the Second Avenue Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay.
Thank you, Ms. Sajit, and I believe the applicant is on the line, will you like to speak? And announce yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, please announce your name.
I'm sorry, I'm getting a whole lot of feedback.
Yes, we are too.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Can you still hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you, Mr. Durham.
Hello?
Please announce yourself again. Can you hear us?
Can you still hear me?
Yes, we can.
I think you guys have lost me.
Okay, we, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, got it, thank you. Sorry about that.
Don't worry.
We, yeah, we tried to keep the design in line with the historic character of the building. We chose a font from 1905, and we've chosen muted colors so it doesn't look like a, you know, freshly painted new sign. so it doesn't look like a freshly painted new sign. And we're open to any recommendations or changes the commission would like to make.
Okay, and I just want to reiterate, you are Michael Durham, correct?
Yeah, correct.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Durham. All right, we might have questions. Ms. Ziegler, do we have any public comment?
We do not, and no callers.
Okay, we will close public hearing. And commissioners, do you have, yes, questions? Commissioner Mahal?
Yeah, is the sign that we're talking about, the sign for the beer cellar that's going to go in? Is that the sign in question?
Yes. Yes, this is Melissa Saget. So, yeah, on the screen here, you'll see the side elevation. It would be the painted sign on the left for Beer Cellar. The sign for Hooters has been there since the mid-'90s.
Well, I just want to say, I remember when this building was, I think it was Murdoch and Mendelsohn's at one time. And I remember when they renovated the building and the Historic Commission, Ann Roberts, was just thrilled with the job that they did. And I just want to say that I think this sign is tasteful, and it's in line. And if people agree, I'd like to make a motion to approve the staff recommendations at 107 Church Street.
Okay, Commissioner Mahal, we'll have some other comment by the commissioners. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, just to Melissa, that was a very nice presentation. And, you know, with these, again, you know, we always like to follow the guidelines, and especially with, you know, signage and everything happening in the downtown core. But with this building, you know, it's such a large building, the fact that the, you know, the Hooters, I never thought I'd say Hooters in a public meeting, but the Hooters logo, you know, sign has been there so long. And then just the very tasteful, and, you know, I applaud the applicant for really making a nice, minimal sign, but that also highlights, you know, a downtown local business. So, I think all of these things, for all of these reasons, I'm also, I'm going to vote for approval, you know, once that happens.
And we do have a motion on the floor. But I will, Vice Chair Stewart?
I'd like to second the motion and also applaud the applicant on selection of a subtle but effective sign that will accomplish their goals. And the staff for being flexible and seeing this as a unique opportunity that's unusual for a lot of the projects that we see in this area.
Good, thank you, Vice Chair. This is Chair Bell also. And again, that's the reason of moving this to our discussion because, again, it's just good for us to be reminded of these historic signage and that we don't set precedents and then have, you know, another applicant come and say otherwise. So, thank you, commissioners. And we did have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I will take the roll. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
You're on mute, Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that discussion, commissioners. Ms. Ziegler, do we have any other business?
We have no more cases, but we'd like to take a minute to switch out and switch out what you see online and go to our new preservation permit tracking map. This is something we told you about last month, and we wanted to just take a moment to show you a little bit about how it works. It is now live, and it is available. It is on our website. It's on our area of Metro's website. But people may be also familiar with the section on planning's portion of the website where there are multiple tracker maps for multiple departments. And eventually, it will be there as well. Let's see, it's very simple. The red dots represent received applications. Blue dots are deferred applications, and green dots are issued permits. So, when you click on a dot, and Melissa's going to click on a dot for me, a window pops up with information such as what the application is for and the council district. And then if you scroll to the bottom of that box and you see View Documents, that's where you can find the application, the staff recommendation, and the permit, depending, of course, on where it is in the process, where the project is in the process. Once all the inspections have taken place and the application is closed out, all the, the green dot will go away. But the documents are still available online through EPAV. And so, in the search engine at the top of Metro's website, you can just enter Codes Permit Search, and the first link will take you to that. And Metro is working on a revised website, so I think we'll have a more intuitive location to find this eventually. But you can zoom in and out. You can move around. There are different layers so that you can turn on a council district layer. You can turn on the district layer so you can see the boundaries. And so, this way, you don't even have to have an address if you're looking for a certain area. What's going on in a certain area, you can find it here. And that is all I have for you. Thank you for giving me that extra time to talk about that.
That's a really great improvement. So, thank you, staff, for working with, however this is.
Yeah, and thank you, ITS. They're the ones who put it together.
Yes, thank you, ITS. So, this is Chair Bell. And I know before we adjourn, this is our last meeting of 2020. And just want to have some comments on how this has been beyond an exceptional year, starting with the March tornado. And our staff has been busy processing those and have gone well. There are still quite a few areas that are still in duress. So, we just continue to work on those. And, of course, the coronavirus and our worldwide pandemic. You know, a time for us just to be grateful. And I, myself, am grateful to our commissioners and their time and their efforts and how diverse and knowledgeable our commissioners are. So, I'm grateful for you all. And also, our amazing and committed MHCC staff. And also, thank you, thank you to Metro IT, because we can't do this without you. So, hopefully, moving on to 2021 with hope for better days. I personally want to wish all of you have holidays and all the season's greetings. So, and before, I want to give Vice Chair Stewart a moment if he has any comments.
I would just like to echo your appreciation to the technical staff as well as our incredible staff of the Historic Commission. And for your efforts, Chairman Bell, to keep our work moving ahead during this incredible time of pandemic and all the challenges that we've had, including the technology of us not only getting the technology in place, which the staff did a great job of, but we commissioners trying to learn the technology and to keep up with them. So, anyway, thanks to everybody. It's been an amazing year in a lot of different ways.
Yes, thank you, everyone. Stay safe, be well.
Thanks.
And we adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.GO.